No. Mr. Fulton, rather than have people inside of you through the chair of things and see at the time. I'll just fill in the people that are here if they want to speak.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I might call to be with the township planning commission. Please join me those who are here.
Oh, they're gonna pledge allegiance now. Okay.
Before we get into any agenda, they just need to find people. This is actually the first meeting you had with a combination of three persons. And then, and one thing is somebody may hear somebody does not have their Zoom YouTube. So that's one thing we would like to ask that everybody. There's no less until they're calling on to make a comment. Also, as all meetings are, this is being recorded through Zoom here at the township office. And if anybody is to participate either in prison or in person, we need you to announce your name and your address. So it'll be recorded. John, anything else?
For the planning commission members, the township manager here, Dr. King, is our total meeting. So if you have questions for either. Just have to recognize them via Zoom.
Okay. The first item on this evening's agenda is approval from our last meeting. Ooh, then it's from our last meeting of 2013. The last part.
Anna, I need you to speak.
When I read the last paragraph from the last thing, I think you can. People cannot physically attend the meeting, that's a huge issue that you cannot, and it was. Very much.
I do not have.
Oh, yeah. Says the board of supervisors would like to wait to do the joint meeting until people can. This idea of can, they cannot.
Make a motion to approve the. Make a motion to approve the minutes associated by. Anna.
I'll second that. Okay, I'm motion by, I can second by this matter. We recommend approval of the minutes in the main thirteen or zero people meeting. Before that, and to change last paragraph from cannot to can. All those in favor?
Well, we need to roll call. We do have. Via Zoom. So all of them are scared to go, but we want, I did want to use this as well. And if Mrs. Will can recognize that you can. Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of that question, say five by saying aye. Aye, aye. I understand.
Mrs. Mrs. Will, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. So I have, that's eight zero two.
Eight seven zero three. Okay, the first action item for the saving deals with Stonegate condominium association score.
Good evening, my name's Aaron Marinus. I'm attorney at Russell Craft and Gruber. Nine thirty, Red Rose Court, three hundred Hemphill Center, Lancaster, one seven six zero one. I'm the attorney for Stonegate condominium association.
Are you kidding me?
No, I was serious about that. What?
I think somebody joined without.
I have George Smith from ELA, Mike Daniels, the president of the association. And I don't know if there are more board members here. We have been working with the township for, you know, an admittedly long time to make repairs to a stormwater basin. At the property that is being eroded by the stream. We've submitted a plan to to make repairs to both the basin walls. To reinforce the stream bank to make sure this doesn't happen again. Arguably, under the township's stormwater management ordinance, this is a modification of a stormwater. A stormwater control feature that would require a stormwater management plan being submitted to the township. In reality, nothing here is changing, none of the calculations are changing. The stream isn't moving, the basin size isn't being, isn't being changed at all. Is repair and improvement. So we've talked to the township staff and engineer. To make sure that the work is done correctly and ask for a waiver of a formal stormwater management plan. So we've, we've taken care of all the proper permitting with the Lancaster County Conservation District and the DEP. The township has a plan, they've, they've looked at it. And we're hoping to press ahead with the, with the actual work, which is why we're looking for a waiver of the stormwater management plan requirement, just to get things moving more quickly.
Could somebody, whether it's Scott May or John, just give us a little detail about what's going to happen.
Scott, can you come in? Sure. There's, as Aaron said, there's, there was significant erosion in a portion of the stream adjacent to one of the stormwater ponds on this site. And it started to eat into the embankment of the, of the berm. As a result of that, ELA and George Smith put together a plan to address that erosion. They got a general permit through the conservation district, which is administered for DEP. And. We met with the applicant, reviewed the plan that they had, had a couple of concerns regarding the limits of work that were proposed on the original plan and the, the detail related to the berm. Since those discussions, the plans were revised and we issued a, an updated letter that reflected that the plans are acceptable. And I believe we indicated that a revised operation and maintenance agreement would need to be provided, just recognizing the changes to the stormwater facility that. And in particular, the stream here that are, that are being done as part of this, this project. But we, we also indicated another letter that we support the request for the waiver of the stormwater management plan.
Scott, when I look at the plans, you have two plans, I believe, it shows one on screen. I'm looking at a couple of drawings. There was submitted GP three and I think GP four or GP three and ESC one.
Yes.
That showing the work along the sides of the stream bed there?
Correct, what they're proposing to do to stabilize the side of the stream is to install riprap or, or large, larger rock. I also had a conversation with the contractor pertaining to the, the exact, the exact specifications of the rock. And I think we were able to come up with something that's going to be acceptable. The originally specified rock was, was simply, it's called an R seven, it's a large, large rock that was going to be placed. We came up with something that's a little, little bit more knitted together with some slightly finer rocks in there. But they'll go in, lay the embankments back of the side of the stream and then install this rock on the sides of it to, to help protect it from future erosion. And it's, there's, there's a limits of work close to the downstream property end and then. Up above a small pedestrian bridge that, that is on the site and that, that sort of identifies the limits of where the erosion is currently happening on the site.
Do any of the planning commission members have a question? Comments on this point? Anybody in the audience either here physically or. If they're on Zoom, John, what's the process? Either raise their hands or speak.
I would recommend maybe asking a question of jazz or super. Cause you're not going to be able to see the razor.
All right, if there's, go for the questions or comments, ready for a motion for an amendment waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we recommend the supervisor's approval of stormwater plan waiver. Stonegate condominium projects subject to staff and engineer comments.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Roar, seconded by Mrs. Burner, that we recommend approval of the stormwater plan waiver request for Stonegate condominium association. Subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor, say five by saying aye. All is posted. Going to be him, Stone seven zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next action item is the wireless facilities ordinance amendment. This is a topic that's been around the township here for at least probably over a year, right, John?
Well, we're working on almost two years.
Been through many iterations. Several meetings of planning commission where we've had a lot of input from the neighbors, the township residents. And also, I guess you could say some technical input. We've revised these ordinance a number of times. And it's now believed time we take form of action one way or the other on the ordinance as is written and submit. Second to see if Mr. Beck would like to add anything or global ordinance before we open up for discussion.
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I know when this was advertised, the request was made for input ahead of time, especially for those people that would not be here in person. And the township has received, I believe the number was somewhere around thirty to forty emails with. Thoughts, recommendations or concerns by township residents. We have, the staff has reviewed those and grouped them into four or five categories of comments. And all those people that have written up their names are associated with those comments as well. So we have a summary of that in front of us here this evening. But we are willing to take further input this evening. From those that are here and those that may be joining via Zoom. Could we caution though that if we have all these people making the comments, especially repeat comments, that will be a long interview. So. I'm going to ask that if anybody does speak either here or on Zoom, that we maintain or comply with our request for a three minute final on, on your comments. And if somebody has pushed a comment here, see them expressly before you, we would ask you to try not to repeat. So I guess with that said, I will open it up to comments.
First, Mr. Chairman, to avoid some repetitiveness. I did provide that handout, if you want to go through some of the comment, the main comments that you received. So people are aware of the comments that Cindy and I received today, that way they're aware of. That we, we don't get any repetitive comments, or at least in an effort to help alleviate some of that.
Okay. I'll actually divide a couple links together. It says, we do not want 5G in or near residential neighborhoods nor near schools. Probably are maybe twenty five people, I'm not sure, some are probably the same, probably twenty five people that consent to pretty that. For that comment. Next one is should delay implementation of 5G technology until more is known about the long term health effects and how the equipment will affect home values. Another one was more simply opposed to 5G technology. And another one was against 5G, especially in residential areas, schools, parks and open spaces. Requesting revision to the wireless facility coordinates. To include National Environmental Preservation Act and National Historic Preservation Act review compliance. That'd be added to the ordinance. And a word, generic one was no to cell phone power. That's pretty tight statement. All right, now it looks like there may be five people here this evening, then I'm going to have a person. And I'll just go around the room.
Read and restore. iCloud app will restore all the photos.
If anybody is on Zoom, please mute your computer, tablet or phone. So let me just go across the room. It's right on the left side. So address and name. Jude Verminchak, I don't know what the one here, address and name. Yes, address and name. Eight twenty five Christine Lane.
What's your name, sir?
Jude Verminchak, eight twenty five Christine Lane. And that's like, it's the East Temple, we select the main address, one seven six zero one. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, John, do you care where they speak, is there a microphone closer?
We're not using microphones. I asked the things. The people, you have to direct it to. If you could turn face.
Swing it around, I can't say they're part of your audience.
We left it up there in case anybody felt more comfortable speaking than could you. But unfortunately, we're having, was this distributed via email or delivered to the township today?
This was.
If you have, yeah, because everything else that we received, we did give the plan to.
Now, we're going to just stretch in three minutes, because I might have to go a little faster than I want to be. I'll, I'll keep Jeff, they give you a little extra time. Yeah, please, please try and. Well, the worst case scenario, I went thirteen seconds. Okay, ready? All right. This is good standing here or do I have to face this?
You have to speak loud, clear.
I'll, I'll do that.
And slow enough, because it does.
That's why as for the thirteen seconds. Ready? Yes. I, Jude Verminchak of eight twenty five Christine Lane, have been a resident of East Temple Township for twenty eight years. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate and within my knowledge. East Temple Township wireless ordinance as drafted is not in compliance with the August ninth, twenty nineteen ruling by the D C Circuit Court of Appeals. According to the top attorneys at the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC or FCC, who specialize in the National Environmental Policy Act. Or NEPA, quote, every new wireless telecommunications facility or WTF must undergo NEPA review. End quote. And WTF applications cannot be attached for such purposes. You have received in the past two days by email and hand delivery, an eleven page letter on this matter. The requirement, the requirement of NEPA review must be added to the wireless ordinance. Furthermore, the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety six, section two fifty three refers to the allowance of a wireless applicant to construct and operate. Where there is a, quote, significant background. End quote. Where no gap exists, no need exists, and where there is no need, applicant has no right. Independent NEPA must be included in the ordinance to ensure that permits are only granted when NEPA has been approved. Note that building codes according to federal emergency management act or FEMA, such as P A's act thirty five and thirty six of twenty seventeen. Are proposed to avert harm, manage dissonant liability and to protect the public health, safety and general welfare. The failure to withhold codes constitutes not practice, illegal activity and conduct publicly. No federal law ever preempted or could preempt building codes for their purposes. Under the ten and other federal state provisions. Any federal law or rule signed out from the FCC, affording to override the health, safety and or general health care of the public, can and must be held. By the local government as prior superseded. I have expressed no doubt on it, but solely that of some of its affiliates only, except the open office, which is likewise not safe and comfortable. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just starting now, I'm good, still trying on, I have the wireless in this facility. And if the five G dispenser is installed in the current township, I won't be able to assist you in community. I am appearing in the cave and I'm here to tell you that this is not acceptable to find the ordinance is not acceptable either. To greetings to all of you, I am John Verminchak and I'm a resident of East Temple. I attest and found that the requirements made in this town are extremely unknown. The easiest way to make an order in the ordinance has been to apply the technology required to the office of service two thousand and one. The ruling by the D C Circuit Court of Review of Maggiore, Verminchak, S T three. Phone wire and wireless internet services only found in one thousand and five hundred two, regulated as telecommunication services. However, on October the first, two thousand and nine, the D C Circuit Court of the town in the case I just mentioned, confronts these services to be declassified by S E P S Title One, unregulated information services. This is in teaching from the original and extent of the communications act of nineteen two, thirty four. App present only wireless wireless based communications are classified as private. Title one, title two applications therefore need to be regulated with residence by our commissioner, for example, with such a fine panel. Regulatory extension means that no preemptive, preemption applies to wireless internet applications, for which reason the ordinance of East Temple. Much require the applicant to specify Title One of internet or what. Indeed, instead of permitting wireless facilities, various local governments around. Indeed, instead of permitting wireless facilities, various local governments around the country have decided to supply public fiber optics to the premises for internet service, which is superior in every way of wireless internet. Fiber provides fastest, clearest transmission over the greatest distance. It's reliable in storms, emergencies, it's not hackable, and it emits no radiation. A decision for the public fiber optic can also enrich the local economy while preserving the quiet enjoyment of our streets and homes. The ordinance, or I require that the ordinance specifies that Title I or Title II purpose be applied for deployment. I have expressed no manner of, or concern, but solely matters as something of fact and law, except your open office. With that said, I now speak to you as a woman, to a man, and to a woman, to everybody in here. I wish for you to represent we, the people, to fight to stop the deployment of the 5G infrastructure in East Tempe Township, to save our children, our grandchildren, plants, animals, insects. The insects will be the first to go, and when the insects go, our food supply goes. So, you should understand what that means. I also wish to let you know that, because this is already, I already put this into action. I and others that I'm going to teach will hold liable any man or woman that aids or abets the installation of a 5G infrastructure in East Tempe Township for trespasses by way of harm and financial loss. We will not hold liable corporations because corporations need men and women to carry out their dirty deeds. And if the men and women stop carrying out the dirty deeds of these corporations, there will be no 5G infrastructure, and you will save the lives of our children, our grandchildren, and all living beings on earth. I am really sick right now because of all the wireless in this room. I can only be in nature and feel like a normal person, and that is going to be taken away from me with this 5G deployment, is put on the ground. I don't know how long I will live. I wish for all of you to have the fortitude and the moral compass to do what is right for all of mankind and to fight with all of your might to stop the deployment of the 5G infrastructure in East Tempe Township and be an example for the rest of the state and the rest of the United States. Thank you for your attention.
So, am I good? Where do you want me to go? Just closer to the. Okay. So, my name's Carly Smith, I reside at 754 Bar Boulevard. You've already gotten a lot of information. I have a question for all of you, and that question is, have there been any comments in favor of this ordinance passing as it is emailed to you? No. So, all the comments that we've received have been negative in nature. Okay. I'm asking you, one, to play some moratorium on this ordinance. Two, I'm asking that you remove residential areas from permitted use. The reason I'm asking for moratorium is because we're not ready to move forward with it. I wish, after two years, John, my goodness, I wish that we were ready to move forward. But there are still gaps in this ordinance as it was redrafted. And with that being stated, I think it's important to note, we want residential areas removed from permitted use. We want recreation and open space removed from permitted use. We would like, as residents, to have setbacks between those and WCs, as originally noted, at 1,500 feet, which also protects schools, not from co-location, but from new additional. I would also like to point out, just as Donna had mentioned, with Title I and Title II, you were issued information, I'm not going to, you can read it, but the Cohen Law Group is wrong. They are wrong in their reply, and it is laid out for you very specifically how it is wrong and what we can do to change that. I typically speak from the heart, and I wanted to make sure that I got all my notes down and I got all my points across, my I's dotted, my T's crossed. And it's been a long journey going through this with all of you. I just want to remind all of you that you're here to help protect the residents. And your residents are begging and pleading with you to not allow this next to our homes. Donna, specifically, cannot live in her environment with 5G. I understand that we all aren't like that. And speaking to you, it's hard for me because I've been driving this for a very long time to protect our children, to protect residents that don't have a voice. I myself can't feel it, but I know it's real. And the challenge with that is that these aren't some pie-in-the-sky scientific studies. It is a proven fact that this causes harm. And if it causes harm, and your very first line in the ordinance, in that first paragraph, under purpose, reads, "The township recognizes that it has an obligation to protect public safety and to minimize the adverse effects of these facilities." I urge you, if nothing else, to remove these from permitted use from residential areas. Thank you.
Have you heard, have you received any chat requests or requests from people on Zoom? Steve and Clay wanted you to hear this evening?
I don't know. I haven't seen anything, but if you want to, if you want to.
John, just so that you're aware, you must hold on to you. I know, I know you're doing the best you can, but I don't know if people are hearing you because when I was on my way in, it was a very challenging year. So, I don't know if there's a way for you to type. Comment. All right. All the comments might be in, but.
While we're on pause here, I'm not a resident, but if there are time remaining for 30 seconds comments. Could you maybe, for you, the resident, probably?
I'll be there. I've been studying this issue for two and a half years, I want to make one point. The scientific evidence is unequivocal, it's established science. Goes back 80 years, thousands and thousands of scientific studies support adverse health effects from microwave radiation of the type emitted by smart meters and 5G. And for industry to say that scientific study wasn't on our frequency or our power density, therefore it doesn't apply, is the equivalent of a panel cigarette saying, "Yes, the Surgeon General is wrong because they didn't test our tobacco from our particular field, therefore it's not applicable." It's established science that microwave radiation is a poison at various levels, including as you eat your food. And the studies I compiled are about this, this name, but there are thousands more that are unclassified, and in the military, there's many classified. Thank you.
Do you think your name? So, Richard Meyer, M.I.R.E.S. And thank you.
I'll make the other comment for me.
Correct.
When I was in San Francisco, living with a bank of smart meters, which is the same frequency as the 5G infrastructure, I was near death within four months. And I went to the country and I became normal, and then when I went back to San Francisco, I got sick again. And then I moved to Lancaster, my home to town, and I had five years of good health until smart meters were installed here. I couldn't breathe when I was around smart meters, and I still can't. And that's why I'm sick right now, and I'm having heart palpitations right now because of this wireless facility. But the one thing I learned from the literature, from cell phones, from a cellphone company literature, it's in their literature, a 5G frequency attaches to oxygen. And when I read that, I said, "That's why I can't breathe around smart meters and wireless energy because my oxygen has radiation attached to it and my lungs are not processing." That is in the literature. It's, go look at it, and that is the reason we can't have it. So, please, please fight to stop the deployment.
Mr. Fullerton, I have not received anything in the chat from anybody on Zoom. And move over here. Evidently, people can hear better. If anybody on Zoom would like to say anything or make a comment to the planning commission, please put it in the chat to let me know, to recognize you, so I can forward you on to the planning commission so we can hear what you have to say. So, we have Heather Patracic, who would like to say something. I'm going to unmute her.
Hi, this is Heather Patracic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I live at 208 Charmaine Avenue, Lancaster, PA. I sent in some articles, I've done a lot of research on the 4G. When you approve the schools to build the towers on the school district grounds, and I had to actually take my son out of Tempe School District to give him an education because I followed them from the reading that I had done. And I believe that I had done some pretty good substantial, you know, studies on how bad 4G was, about, you know, studies even across the world, from Australia to Germany, with significant studies on the health ramifications of 4G. And I don't feel there's enough testing on the 5G to put it up in our backyard, so close to us, when there are other, better communication systems out there. And I don't feel that we should be bullied into putting them up in our residential areas. And that's, I'm really against the residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patracic. Could you tell us what your address is, or did you go over to you? You already did, 208 Charmaine.
208 Charmaine, is that what you were asking?
Thank you, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ken Rising, 1385 Lansville Road, would like to speak, and I'm going to unmute him.
Hello, thank you for recognizing me. I wanted to talk about what the actual current standard is and what it's based on. It is currently a consensus standard that carries a meaning that it all agreed to. That is a collective opinion without dissent. Otherwise, there is no consensus. It's important to note that this international standard that our decisions are being made of was only defined by the research based on the heat produced by these radiological devices. How do I start this video? So, in 1980s is when the research was done, and they only used heat as their only aspect to evaluate whether or not there was any health and safety, short and long-term impacts from the human exposure to EMFs. The U.N.'s guiding principles on business and human rights was to protect and respect human life. 5G technologies was researched, Martin Paul, there's an activation of voltage-gated calcium channels. Cell levels are affected. The metal in our bodies are going to be attracted by a more magnetic force, by 5G, than our natural bodies create. This aligns our blood cells, this pulls the metal, the manganese, the cadmium, the chrome, the manganese, all of it lines up in our body. Our cells can't respond. Our cells are no longer evenly distributed around our body. It's a proven fact already. There's more research now since the 1980s, when the standard that we're making decisions on was even researched. I want to say that we need to do more research, and with the potential effects, that we need to make some conservative decisions. The scientific hierarchy, the old paradigm of EMF research cannot be used to predict all the biological effects of a conservative decision, human-friendly, and scientifically-rounded approach. So, just keep that in mind because we're all in this together. It's not you versus us. My body is made of the same cells that yours is made of. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have not received any other chats asking to be recognized. Any of the planning commissioners have any discussion points or questions?
Can you back up something that I heard?
Mr. Biggs from the planning.
Last night I went back and read some of the prior versions, some of those ordinance, 2018, 2019. There was one in 2019 we actually recommended to the, or approval to the board supervisors, which did not have residential zones in there. And I think Carly could only, I'm not sure if we're talking about the same version or not, but not include residential zones. Had setbacks for schools, had larger setbacks between the nodes, and maybe a few other bits. And then when we saw this version, I guess the last meeting or two, some of those things were taken out or residential zones added in.
Mr. Biggs, can you speak up?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to get, do we know why residential zones were added back into this ordinance? From the time we approved an ordinance to the supervisors that did not have those in the zone?
Supervisors, the supervisors want to make sure all of the township is covered. And it is the will of the board that the version is presented before you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight.
So if it was not in residential zones, would we not be able to cover the township? Let's say we used the add zones.
Yes.
The other four or five zones.
Yes, we have, we have received comments from AT&amp;T and Verizon. And pass that on for legal opinions from the Cohen Law Group that if we do not include it in the residential zones, it could be effectively prohibiting deployment of 5G.
Is there more study we can do to validate that versus just taking a lawyer's word for it?
At this point, we're spending a lot of money on the Cohen Law Group for this ordinance. And the board has made it perfectly clear to staff that this is what they want. And I don't, I don't think a study is justifiable at this point.
Yeah, I just want to make the, I guess, the commissioner aware that we did approve a version of this that took it, that did not have residential zones, that did have setbacks. So I think we're voting on them as it stands today. I want to do more, I want to have more discussion and research around why we add those back in. And if there's way to come around this.
I can tell you why we got rid of, why we're including the residential zones and why we got rid of the separation distance. Because again, the comments we got from Verizon, AT&amp;T and Cohen Law Group verified that it could be construed as an effective prohibition of five, deployment of 5G.
And what would that mean?
We would get sued. Township would get sued. By AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, Altal, T-Mobile, any provider for effectively prohibiting the deployment of 5G and violating the FCC orders.
John, does that have to do with the ordinance passed last night by the FCC utilizing Section 6409 of the spectrum act?
I am not familiar with where you're talking about that.
Basically, it states, and it's written in the ordinance, I have to find it where it is, but basically it states local governments such as East Temfield Township. And that was, they did approve that last night. So it isn't our, it isn't the actual ordinance. I'm not sure if page it is.
On page six. But you have a title two under Mozilla, supersede that.
Okay, but are you aware that last night they did, the FCC did with two dissenting?
I am. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that this supersede, if we add into the ordinance that you want title one and title two differentiation, the problem is.
Well, to the Mozilla case, we did send that to Cohen Law Group along with the National Historic Preservation Act and NEPA. And again, NEPA's, the rulings that Carly pointed out in her emails are related to regulating 5G and wired facilities based off of health effects from our emissions, which we are not allowed to do by the FCC rule.
And I know the Cohen group is buying that.
Carly, if you allow me to finish, National Historic Preservation Act, based on what Mike Roberts from the Cohen Law Group told Cindy and I and provided via email, deals with tribal grounds, which we do not have any here in the township. And the Mozilla case that Carly referenced has nothing to do with wireless facilities. It's a case to differentiate between cable, as in cable television service and cellular service, not wireless broadband.
We understand that the Cohen Law Group represents telecommunications groups, all of them, right? We understand this in their back pocket. We're also listening to AT&amp;T and Verizon as our expert matters on where they should be placed. There have been study upon study that shows specifically at one watt, this can travel, 5G can travel well over $500. But the telecoms are gonna tell you that they want more because they want more. It's better for them. Of course, it's better for them. But is it doing right by our residents? This is a classic case of box M and N house. We worked so hard on this. And you've had 40 comments from residents, all asking you to do the exact opposite of what's happening here and go back to the original ordinance as it was approved, removing residential from permitted use. And not one comment begging you to have them in except for Verizon, AT&amp;T, and your telecoms. No, no.
I don't dispute that. I'm just saying that we rarely get positive comments on anything.
I hear you, but when you get 30 or 40 of them are the opposite and it's posted and you have the ability for it to be posted on Nextdoor and ultimately it becomes a negative. I know. Thank you.
As per what I read, contact the FCC lawyers if you want clarification. They are the experts, as I said in here, and as per the ruling of the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals, there would be, there would be some information that I think is very critical.
I understand. And unfortunately, people could probably go out and find information to support whatever position they want to take. So it's up to us to try to filter through that and make our own decision. Like John said, who knows, maybe whichever way we go, we're gonna get sued by someone. So it's a question of which way we think is, is the way to go, higher probability of success. So, Mr. Garrett, you can add your hand up for.
There's a basic zoning issue that if you don't provide for a valid use, the court, one in appeal, will allow the use to the way that the appaloons. So to outright prohibit the use is a very difficult thing for zoning to do. And then through various federal law and court decisions over the years, not just for this subject, but for mines and a variety of environmental type problems. Local municipalities can't regulate something that's regulated by the Fed. So to come up with environmental conditions that's an issue regulated through federal government is you're gonna lose an appeal with us. So I, I agree with what John sang. I agree with Mike Roberts, the township attorney in Allenview. And I have not been here through the whole process of your looking at our district.
I think, Mr. Garrett, it's, it's not that we would prohibit the cell towers entirely. It's just a question of their location and distances and what neighborhoods that.
Right. The problem is that you, by prohibiting them in certain neighborhoods, prohibit the use because it can't function. So although you may pick a spot up by Rappel and say they could be over there by Rappel, but not around the township, we got a spot for you. That's not gonna work. And as I understand it, that was the challenge once the solicitors got what we had recommended for performance. So we're somewhat limited with what we can do. And I think this is an attempt, a valid attempt to do what we can. That doesn't mean the ordinance won't be amended in the future.
John or Cindy, did you get any more information back from the Cohen group when they talked about these two, I'll say, hurdles that were mentioned?
NEPA and the National Historic Preservation Act.
Yes, we did.
So are those valid?
No, they are not.
They're not valid?
No, they are not.
Sir, discussion from the commission. If not, then I'm ready to take a motion on this ordinance.
Well, I'd like to pretty be stretched better. I, I want something that's gonna stand up in court and I guess with respect to staff and the councils that we've used. I'll make a motion, we recommend a supervisor to approve of the wireless facility ordinance.
I'll second that. Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, signed by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of a wireless facilities ordinance amendment that was submitted this evening to the board supervisor. All those in favor, say yes. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 So let's, let's do a roll call here. Oh, well, let me just check. It was Mr. Biggs, this, or Mr. Fullerton, against.
Four?
Three against. Mr. Detter?
Mike Biggs, four.
Alkowski?
Yeah, we have Dwight, Jim Hackett, Brett Detter, and Matt Alkowski, four.
Four, yes. Four, four, three against. So the motion carries to the board supervisor. All right, moving on to the agenda. Under new business, John, you have some plans to surprise us up, something coming up?
Yes, sir. We have another, I'll get up. Township received a petition to amend the zoning ordinance from Stow Grove, which is the owner of the property at Stoffers of Kissel Hill, which is, I believe, 311 Rorstown Road. They requested to amend the zoning ordinance, sign regulations for commercial properties in the regional commerce center zone. That will become, that will come before the planning commission at a future meeting. And it's simply just a brief, planning commission, what's coming before. You were provided copies of the ordinance for review. I ask that between now and the next time it comes before the planning commission, you review it, have any comments, have any questions, please draft them and send them to the rest of the planning mission members and the staff. That way we can address them at the next meeting. It gives us a chance to do a little research and properly answer those questions. Plan introductions, 2220 Dairy Road. They're proposing a land development plan for a warehouse. It'll be warehouse distribution. That is most likely gonna be on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting. It's been through staff review at least two times. Community Fellowship Church is proposing a building addition. They are, they have submitted a revised final land development plan due to the fact that the previously previously approved final plan for Community Fellowship Church did allow for them to make a expansion to the building, but they are modifying that expansion. Hence, they need to do a revised final land development plan. The last one is 791 Stony Battery Road. That's at the corner of the north east corner of Stony Battery Road and Gold Road. And they're proposing a heavy industrial warehouse distribution facility approximately 250, 260 thousand square feet. However, before that plan comes before the planning commission, they do have a conditional use application that is scheduled for board review at their next meeting, which is June 17. As far as new business and plan introductions, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
John, just, you kind of, my iteration, where's 2220 Dairy Road? About where is that?
You were over Rorstown, oh, Rorstown Road, and you have to go back to Dairy Road. It's on the south side of Dairy Road. It is, it was part of the old Cryer Farm there.
So it's close to the farm on the east side as opposed to far out the end with bridges?
Yes. Yes.
They were in here with a sketch plan.
That is correct.
A month or two ago, correct? Okay.
It was on March. It was the last new person meeting we had.
Mr. Chairman, John, the applicant that was on our agenda tonight for Mulberry, do you expect them back with that request?
There was a late withdrawal from the applicant. Staff was recommending denial of their preliminary and waiver request. Professional courtesy dictates we have to provide that to them, just like they provide stuff to us. When we have a chance to.
I vented the thing.
After discussion between, with their attorney, their design team, they decided to withdraw it. We don't know what their next step is. I'm sure we will hear from them in the near future. And when that does occur, and we receive any plans with whatnot, we'll let the planning commission and the public know. Their next step is preliminary plan. And they would have to go through based off of everything. They did get a conditional use approval after the Commonwealth Court overturned the board's denial of their conditional use application from last March 2019. So they are approved to move forward with a cluster development plan for 18 total dwelling units, 19 lots. And the cluster development, they would be doing a mixed dwelling type for single family and 14 duplex. They are proposing a primary access off of Gold Road to connect over to Lindana. But as far as anything else, they haven't committed anything plan wise that would trigger staff review or engineer review. So we have no, no idea where they are or what they're doing for swarm or management. We have not had a chance to review any traffic impact study. And we have not reviewed. study. And we have not reviewed a fully designed land development plan.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to comment on that property.
Okay, we'll need your name and address.
Sure. It's 18 Stonebridge Drive.
If I could, it's a little difficult for everybody here. If you could come over so back, mic up.
Yep. My name's Dan Italian. I live at 18 Stonebridge Drive. And my question, really why I was here tonight when I saw it was on the agenda, is the developer has been granted a demolition permit, and I'd like to know what they are allowed to do at this point. So that the land has been recently surveyed, and we like to know what actually are they permitted to do?
They, they received a demolition permit to remove all the structures on the property.
Okay, but does that mean the driveway and the trees?
If that's part of getting the equipment in to get, to remove the house.
There's a full driveway.
There's no authorization the township needs to give to remove trees. They are allowed to cut down trees on the property.
Okay, so that's what I need to know. But are they allowed to regrade the land?
At this point, no.
And should that start to occur, who do we contact?
Me.
Well, there's a March stormwater issue.
Yes.
And that's why we're concerned.
Share that concern. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you.
John, did you distribute those three plans for the introductory plans? I don't think I got that in the packet. Plans a little.
Those were just introduction. It's a typical courtesy for the planning commission. It's basically, those were missed at the previous meeting. This is just to update the planning commission what is coming, and when they're ready for the planning commission, I will send them out.
So you don't distribute until ahead of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any old business to come before the commission?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if anybody's still on Zoom that would like to make a comment about anything else in East Temfield other than the plans that we reviewed this evening, please use the chat function and get your request in quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Carrie asked, what rights do they have in terms of doing work on the property? I believe she's referring to 372 Gold Road and, and what Mrs. Ali was speaking to. I believe I've addressed that. If there's any other questions, they can email or call, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or look into any concerns the residents have for that property.
Okay, I don't see any other chats coming in. Do you see any?
No, sir.
Okay. If there's no further business to come before the commission, this meeting is adjourned.